Okay, good evening everybody and thank you for tuning in to an online community town hall meeting or town hall meeting with Paul Manley. My name is Elan Goldblatt. I'm Paul's Chief of Staff. And first before we start, I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional and unceded territory of the Tsinamal First Nations. And that Nanaimo Ladysmith, the writing of the Nanaimo Ladysmith also includes traditional unceded territories of the Stamenis, Nanauas and Lyax in First Nations. Everybody is welcome and thank you for participating. You can always go to PaulManleyMP.ca and sign up to receive email updates about future events and about other things that Paul is doing. I'd like to invite people to ask questions in the YouTube comment section. Laurie MacMillan is going to be moderating the comment section, so please be respectful. Any abuse of language or personal attacks or misinformation will be deleted there by Laurie. Well, the way that the evening is going to go is it's going to be kind of a question and answer situation. I will ask Paul questions to provide an update about his work in the past couple of months in parliament and in the riding. And bring up the questions that were sent in advance to by email or on Facebook. And discuss other issues that have come up a lot in communication with constituents in the riding to this office. And about Paul's work in the past few months. So Paul, welcome to the evening. Parliament returned from prorogation on September 23rd. And on September 28th, parliament had the first virtual vote in Canadian history. How has that been going?
It's been going really well. I want to start by restating I'm here in Tsinamal First Nations unceded territory. And my riding is within the territories of Nanauas, Stamenis, Tsinamal and Lyax. And I really appreciate living in this land, in this traditional hulk of a kingdom, speaking of the hulk of a kingdom, speaking lands. And I want to welcome everybody tonight for joining in. I'm really looking forward to the day when we can do this in person again, where we can spend time together and you can ask me questions live from the floor. So it's been an interesting time. We had our first online vote. It was a historic moment in Canadian history. On September 28th, we voted using... our process of sitting here in the chair. In the House of Commons, you have to stay in your seat. You have to be there for the question in your seat. And it's a standing vote. So, people that vote for a piece of legislation, it goes by the largest party first. It starts with the party that put forward that piece of legislation. And everybody stands, and the clerk reads off your name. And you go through all the different parties, and the Greens are always last. In the virtual vote, it's the same thing. But I'm not allowed to leave this spot right here. I have to remain within the view of the camera. And when the clerk calls my name, I vote, I say, "Mr. Speaker," I vote yes, or I vote no. And so we had that first virtual vote. I went back to Ottawa, and I spent time there until October 7th. And I came back for Thanksgiving weekend. And I wasn't feeling well when I came back. And so, I had been self-isolating with my previous trips to Ottawa, just, you know, following protocol, making sure that I kept people safe. And so I went into self-isolation, and I went and got a COVID test, which was negative. But then, when I was looking at going back to Ottawa, Ottawa went into lockdown. It was a red zone. And so, I would have flown to Ottawa, gone into self-isolation, been in virtual Parliament on my computer there, or been very careful about going to the House of Commons. And so I just stayed here because I could do everything, I can do everything here. I can take part in debate, I can make speeches, I can vote. And so, that's what it's been like, is locked down to this computer, to this seat. And I sometimes do it at home, and I sometimes do it here. Of course, we're on Ottawa time, so Parliament starts at seven in the morning on a number of days. It's 10:00 in the morning in Ottawa, but it's seven in the morning here. And we have committee meetings that start at seven in the morning as well. So I have to be, if I'm on house duty that morning, I have to be in my seat in front of the camera with my jacket on, because I can't be, you're not allowed into the house without a jacket, and I can't speak without a tie. So we have to follow those similar protocols. So seven in the morning, I would be dressed and ready to go. When it was house duty for Jenica or Elizabeth, because we rotated, I would still tune in and I would listen, make sure that I was there in case something happened and a vote was called, or there was a unanimous consent motion, or something like that. Anything that I needed to pay attention to, or for committee meetings. So I took part in a number of different committees, and would start at seven in the morning. And some of those days, like when we had emergency debates, they would go until midnight in Ottawa, but only till nine o'clock here. So that's when I was thankful to be here, and you could see people getting really tired there. But, you know, it's nine o'clock here, it's not so bad. But long days, and a lot of legislation has been tabled since we reconvened after the prorogation. Nineteen different bills. A lot of different stuff has been tabled. We debated a lot of different things, and we voted on a lot of different things. And we've had voting sessions that have lasted several hours at a time. One of the fun things I'll say is that when we were first doing the voting, when I was in Ottawa, I was voting virtually, and we had a number of votes. And all of the MPs are just kind of hanging out while the bells ring, and people are all online. And some of the musicians would start playing. And so, there's some very awesome musicians in the House of Commons. Tim Louie is a Liberal MP, he's an amazing piano player, and he would get on and play. And Charlie Ankers is an NDP member, he's a singer and guitar player. And other people would sing along. Marilyn Gladu got on, and she's a Conservative, played songs. And so, there's kind of this convivial, you know, air about things. And then, the votes start to get counted, and away you go. You've got to keep your mic off, because if your mic, everybody knows with Zoom, if you accidentally turn your mic on, suddenly you're the person on the big screen. And they have big screens in the House of Commons now. So when I speak from here, I pop up on a massive screen, two of them actually, on either side of the speaker, and you hear me over the PA system. And if I accidentally turn my mic on, which I haven't, you end up interrupting the proceedings, and you get told.
All right, well, one of the things that people have commented about in previous events is that they appreciate that you often give a tiny bit of sort of education about different issues that people might not have known about. And so before we go into the issues, and there are a lot of issues that have been brought up and questions that have been brought up, I wondered if you could talk a little bit again about like, what does a unanimous consent motion mean? And if you can also relate it to what was going on until virtual voting was actually put in place? Because a lot of people sort of don't maybe exactly understand how things went in Parliament during a lot of the early days of COVID.
So unanimous consent means that nobody objects to a motion. And so somebody, you know, a member can stand up on a point of order and put forward a motion. And usually, the normal practice is that they will have already reached out to all the other parties to seek unanimous consent. And so, the language is, "Mr. Speaker, if you seek it, you will find unanimous consent for the following motion," and then they'll read the motion. Sometimes these things are done on a performative basis, where there hasn't been unanimous consent sought at all. And those things will almost always get voted down. And it's kind of used for social media, I think, as a way of saying, you know, "Look what we did in the House of Commons, and nobody voted with us on this, shame on them." So it's used on a kind of performative basis sometimes. But sometimes it's actually used as a way to get a motion through where all parliamentarians agree on something. So, you know, last week, during the last week of Parliament, there was a motion for a suicide hotline with a single number, I think it was 998. I can't remember exactly what those numbers are. But that was passed unanimously. A Conservative MP got up and brought that motion forward, and everybody said yes. Normally, in the House, the Speaker would say, "Do we all agree?" And if somebody says no, then it's no. And now, because we have this hybrid Parliament, where some members are in the House of Commons and some are on virtually, they only ask for a dissenting voice. So if nobody says anything, then it passes unanimously. And we get some things done that way that can go through really quick. Sometimes it will be a motion to take a bill through, you know, second reading, third reading, and pass it on to the Senate, all in one go, because everybody in the House agrees with it. And there's no point in continuing debate on that piece of legislation. So yeah, that's, you know, one of the things that can happen.
Yeah, all right, well, thanks for explaining that. And also, like, one of the points that came up early on in the days of the pandemic, which a lot of people didn't understand, which I saw in emails that were coming into the office, and sometimes in phone calls that were coming into the office, was that people didn't realize that all the early decisions in relating to sort of funding and supports and the SERB, and all those things, they were all done in unanimous consent. And a single no vote, a single dissenting MP could have struck any of those things down. So when people were kind of like, you know, complaining about like, "Why are these people getting away with doing that?" Or "How come this party isn't providing effective opposition?" It's like that. It was actually, it was really that like, all the parties were supportive of certainly the early COVID supports that were legislation that was being passed. Because a single MP, not even a single party, one single MP, it wasn't majority rule. It was, a single MP could have struck anything down, right?
Yeah, and that's because we're bypassing the normal procedure. So when we were in an emergency, normally a bill, like to do something like the SERB, would take a long time to go through. You would have first reading, when it's tabled in the House, the bill is read, and then it goes into debate, and then it's voted on in second reading, and then it goes to committee. And then it comes back from committee, and it goes back into debate on third reading, and then it goes to a vote, and then it goes to the Senate. And so that can take a long time. And some bills that we've tabled have taken several months to get through, because they're contentious, and there's a lot of debate over them. But in this case, we wanted to get money out to help Canadians right away. And so there was negotiation between the parties, and there was agreements made. And we were involved in those negotiations and those agreements, because we could have said no. And so that's why, when there was ministerial statements and things like that, when these emergency measures were brought in, the Greens were given an opportunity to speak to it, because that was part of the agreement. And so, when we had the debates too, like we had question periods that would last 90 minutes, and it would be five-minute question periods, and we would get one of those five minutes. And that was part of the agreement, of agreeing unanimously to push this legislation through, and so that we could get something like the SERB, the wage subsidy, these other benefits out and passed within days. And so that was, you know, how we got a lot of that going. It was a very Team Canada approach, working together, trying to do what we could for our constituents and for all Canadians.
Okay, thanks for explaining that, Paul. So we'll jump into the issues. Homelessness is a major issue, obviously, an issue that we hear about a lot in the media in Nanaimo, that we hear about a lot from constituents. We receive emails and phone calls to this writing. We received specifically a question from Philip in advance. I just want to know, what is being done to help the homeless people in Nanaimo? Our homeless people in Nanaimo. The situation has deteriorated fast, and the police seem to have dedicated all their time to harassing them. So can you speak a little bit about homelessness and this issue?
So, first of all, this is not unique to Nanaimo. And we see a lot of homelessness here, but in Toronto and Ottawa, there's actually more homelessness per capita than there is in Nanaimo. And this is a problem that is happening right across the country. And it's because of a number of factors. One is affordability, the cost of housing has gone up. And especially in this region, houses are selling. People who rent are told to move out. And then, the new owner comes in and boosts the rent. And so the rents are getting higher and higher, it's getting less affordable for people to live in. But also, we're seeing a financialization of the real estate market. So after the 2000 and a crash, when house prices dropped, hedge funds and pension funds started buying up housing stock. And apartment buildings and, you know, housing all around the world. This is an issue all around the world. And in places, there's a film called Push, a documentary that explains this. And in some places, you know, these hedge funds and pension funds, they don't even care if the places are rented, because real estate values keep on going up. So it doesn't matter, your investment is a good investment, whether somebody's paying the rent to help with the mortgage or not. And what the hedge funds do is they chop up, you know, these assets, and put them out on paper, and people are buying paper that has different assets on them. And so you don't know, you know, it's part of a portfolio, you don't know exactly what's in the portfolio, their derivatives and other things that are, you know, financial instruments. And a lot of it is real estate, and a lot of it is homes that people should be living in. So this is an issue that's happening around the planet. Here in particular, we're seeing the cost of housing go up, because this has become a very attractive place to live. And so people who are low income are having a harder time trying to find a place to live. And when I worked here with youth with barriers to employment, and people with diverse abilities, I saw a lot of people who ended up having to move because the place they were living in was sold. So the other issue, the federal government had gotten out of the business of affordable housing, you know, in the late 70s, early 80s, and out of co-op housing. They're back into that with a national housing strategy, because the federal government has a role to play and should be playing that role. My very first question in the House of Commons, when I was elected, the day that I walked into the House of Commons, I was given a question, and I asked about homelessness, and I brought up the situation here. And then I had a late show proceeding, so if I'm not happy with, you know, a question period, you get 35 seconds to ask a question, and you get a 35-second answer. And if you're not satisfied, you can ask for an adjournment proceeding, which is a late show, which happened to be adjournment at midnight. So my first debate in the House of Commons was after midnight, but it was about housing and affordability. And I got to talk about the situation here, and I met with the Parliamentary Secretary after that, and I've had some good discussions with him about this issue. He's an MP from downtown Toronto, and it's a serious issue there as well. It's a serious issue in a number of places. And right here, my office on Dunsmere, you know, we had a homeless camp behind us on Wesley, and I watched things play out here in front of us. And this is not, you know, this is the homeless population that we care about and see. It's the most visible one to us. But it's actually a small, small portion of the homeless population in Nanaimo. There's over 400 people who are homeless in Nanaimo. And some people think it's closer to 600 people. And most of those people are hidden to us. They're living in cars, they're living in campgrounds, they're couch surfing homeless, going from home to home, other people's homes. And it's not what you see with necessarily people on the street. So Wesley Street, I've heard different perspectives of what happened with that situation. In other communities, like that wasn't a planned camp. And in other communities, the municipalities have actually planned out where homeless camps are going to go. And they're working on things like tiny homes in Cowichin. They're working on, you know, converting storage units in places like Victoria. There's different solutions happening here and there. There is a rapid housing initiative, it's a billion-dollar fund. Half of that, half a billion dollars went to 15 largest cities in Canada that have homeless problems, because it's spread out everywhere. And the other half a billion, so Nanaimo wasn't on that list, but the other half a billion is open to organizations and smaller municipalities. And I shared that information with the city, and they are applying in partnership with BC Housing. Typically, housing is a provincial issue, and the funds flow from the federal government to the provincial government, and the provincial to the municipal, or they work together. And it's a lot of different organizations, actually, that provide housing, like Nanaimo Affordable Housing, or Telecom, or Nanaimo Aboriginal Centre, or John Howard. So that's, you know, kind of where the federal government comes in. We do have federal funding for reaching home, which is to deal with the homeless situation. And typically, before COVID, there was designated funds, both Indigenous funds and for Nanaimo, and the amounts were, the designated fund for Nanaimo was $616,000, and the Indigenous fund was $256,000. And that funding went to places like John Howard, and Telecom, and many, many other services that are working with the homeless, so that the shelters and all the different agencies, Salvation Army, that are working with the homeless population. During COVID, there was another influx of money to help with PPE, renos, additional services, helping with shelters, to deal with distancing, outreach teams. And this has been invested in, you know, round one has been invested and spread out. And round two is going to include getting warming centers open in our community, training more frontline staff. So these funds go to the United Way, and then they're parsed out to the different organizations and agencies. Um so this fund, these funds go to the United Way and then they're parsed out to the different uh organizations and agencies. And then there's. Um application processes for different parts of the fund. And so the designated amount that's come for round one and round two for. Um, the COVID uh reaching home fund is seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and the indigenous fund. Is five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. So four hundred and twenty thousand of that came. Early in the pandemic, the second amount has uh come now and that is being used. So we're gonna see. A lot more services uh coming soon. Um and the Nanaimo Homeless Coalition is the um the organization that brings together everybody. Uh, you know, Canadian Mental Health Association, uh big organizations, uh small organizations. So anything from Salvation Army to Literacy, Central Bank of Ireland, uh Aboriginal Center, the different outreach teams. And, you know, trying to get, working together to deal with this issue because it. It is a crisis in this community and and it's affecting uh a lot of people. So.
Yeah, so um we encourage people to go to nanaimohomelesscoalition.ca. Maybe Laurie can put that link in the um YouTube comments. And you can also like the Nanaimo Homeless Coalition on Facebook. And get updates about their work and they're really good about putting information out there cuz um there's a lot of um.
There's a lot of misinformation.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
You know, I was talking to somebody the other, just the other day and they were saying, you know, people are are coming here from across Canada because they're homeless. But in the last homeless count, uh when they're asked people where they're from, you know, most of the the homeless population is from Nanaimo. And a lot of them have have lived here a long time. Some of them have been, you know, they're they're second generation, third generation Nanaimoites. And they're just having a hard time. And the reason why home people are homeless, there's a multitude of reasons why people are homeless. So. It's it's multifaceted and I and I, the the Nanaimo Homeless Coalition has done a great job of of uh putting. You know, compiling information, compiling data. They have some videos on there that that people can watch that really tell, tell you a lot about about the situation for homeless people in Nanaimo.
Yeah, this is definitely, this is definitely an issue that brings up a lot of emotion for a lot of people. And um, you know, it brings up uh some also fear and stuff like that. So it's. The those, that kind of environment is is ripe for uh for misinformation and and for for myths to to crop up about it. Uh the next issue that uh, this is a really relevant issue. It's, I mean, we've seen it in our office for quite a while for since the beginning. But it's really come up in the media um recently and a week ago, you were. Uh you were part of um of a press uh conference about this. And this is the issue of the CERB eligibility and repayment issues. So uh the CRA sent out about four hundred and forty thousand. Letters to um, they call them educational letters, it's kind of a weird name. And telling people that they might not have been eligible for for the CERB and clarify and telling them that they might have to pay. And that money back. And we've heard from a lot of uh really worried people about this. So I'm wondering if you can go to to tell people a little bit about that issue.
So this is something actually that we anticipated right from the start because we. We saw a lot of these programs were being invented on the spot. The prime minister was making an announcement and then civil servants were trying to figure out how to implement the announcement. And um departments like uh CRA, the Canada Revenue Agency and um.
Service Canada.
What's that?
Service Canada.
Service Canada uh were inundated and and so employees from other departments were moving into those departments to help staff them up. And all of the staff were trying to figure out what the rules were and we were flagging things at the beginning, like. There's gaps here, there's gaps there, people are gonna fall through these gaps. And so we, you know, when they first put out the wage subsidy, it was only ten percent. Uh uh that they that the government was gonna kick in for a wage subsidy, we were saying it needs to be higher. Seventy five, eighty percent and it ended up going to seventy five percent. But we were identifying gaps and the government was reacting at the time and trying to fill the gaps. But one of one of the things that happened was that for self-employed people, it wasn't clear. Wh- what their, the five thousand dollars that they needed to earn was, whether it was net or gross. And and there were things said, like the finance minister uh at the time said, if you have five. If you're self-employed and you have five thousand dollars worth of revenue, then you're eligible. Well, five thousand dollars worth of revenue, if you look up revenue in term uh as a business term, it means your gross sales. Like your, everything you've sold before expenses. So then you have your revenue. And then you you subtract your expenses, then you have gross income. Or uh your net before taxes and after taxes, you have your net. But people got confused by these terms and and uh the CRA, some of their staff were giving out confusing advice. And some MPs gave out confusing advice because uh they were unsure. And so there's news stories about liberal MPs who. Who didn't know what the rules were at the time and gave people advice that um turned out wasn't the right advice. It's so, there's been four hundred uh thousand, almost five hundred thousand of these letters. Sent out by s- by the CRA. Um asking, letting people know that they're under review and may have to pay back whatever they got. In some cases, fourteen thousand dollars. Uh and in this community, I've heard from people who are on disability benefits. And they have, they're self-employed on the side to, because if you're on disability, if you're on provincial disability, you're allowed to earn twelve thousand dollars a year. Everything, every dollar after that gets clawed back dollar for dollar in what many people call a form of legislated poverty. Keeps people at a certain level. Um but so people would have self-employed uh side jobs to earn money. And if you're self-employed and you have a home-based business, well, you can run ru- write off a portion of your rent, a portion of your utilities. And of course, any expenses that that are related to that business. And so some people, you know, that are are um. Uh on disability benefits were uh thought that it was their gross, but it wasn't. Some single moms who thought it was their gross, but it wasn't, are are caught up in this. Some people who actually, you know, I was in business for a while and and uh you have good years where you're making a lot of money and then. Uh a year where you have to spend a lot of money on equipment. And I remember one year, my camera died. I had to buy a new camera. I invested ten thousand dollars in a new camera. That new camera wasn't compatible with my old computer. Or the software. So I had to buy a new computer, new software. And at the end of the day, with all of the different things that had to go along with that camera. I invested twenty five thousand dollars. So that was a year where my expenses were huge and my income. Was very low because, you know, that that's how things work when you're in business. You have. You have write-offs because you have to invest in in the equipment that you need to operate a business. And so some people have put put in a lot of. Uh investment into capital in twenty nineteen. And so twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen might have been really good years for them, but then they're being assessed on how much they earned in twenty nineteen. And if their net wasn't five thousand dollars, then they're they're um. Being told that they have to pay this back. In the meantime, we have other government programs. Where, you know, for long-term care homes is is an example, where the government put money into the into the long, private long-term care homes. Where they took that money and turned it around and they paid shareholders and CEOs and gave, you know, gave dividends to shareholders. Bonuses to CEOs and they're using government money for that. We have other situations. Because the the wage subsidy, when they changed the rules again in September, your loss could be ten, ten percent, twenty percent. It could be much less than it was originally. It didn't have to be related to COVID. So in some cases, banks uh are are able to apply for the wage subsidy, even though they're still raking in billions of dollars in profit. And corporations that are owned by billionaires are you able to use the wage subsidy. And in Canada, the billionaire class uh has been, you know, raking money in hand over fist. So the top twenty billionaires in this country increased their wealth by thirty seven billion dollars in the first six months of the pandemic. There was a drop in in stock prices, but then a a boom. And so there um and. You know, some of these companies, like big grocery chains owned owned by uh Jim Jim Patterson or Gail and West Weston or. They're they're making huge amounts of money and increasing their wealth um by vast amounts. And at the same time, some of their companies are able to utilize the wage subsidy. Even though the drop in their income might not be related to COVID, might be related to something else. But you don't see the CRA going after them and you won't uh because they have. Uh a lineup of lawyers on on um retainer and accountants on retainer. They can help them. You know, deal with with these government programs and fight the government if the government comes after them. And and um. The the people that are really gonna get hammered by this and and my heart goes out to them. I'm telling you, anybody that, anybody that's listening right now. If you owe money, uh if you've had one of these letters, just don't worry about it right now and and let us know because we're gonna fight for you. Uh and you know, I've sent a couple of letters to to ministers explaining that 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 they need to own this because they messed it up. Um but yeah, speaking on, picking on the poor, like anybody that that, you know, is do is. You're talking about five thousand dollars in a year's income, obviously you're low income. And in a different situation than the billionaire class in this country. There was another question that uh was related to um a question from Sarah about um support for um. Universal basic income and whether other MPs are are um. Uh more interested in this. I can tell you absolutely, yeah, it's changed uh changed a lot. The Green Party was really the only party that was talking about this a lot. We were the only ones talking about it in the. In the twenty nineteen election and had it as part of our platform. And um when the pandemic, there was, you know, there are other MPs who in in parties who were bringing it up, but it just wasn't. On in on any other party platforms. But once the pandemic hit, we were really talking about it. And say, we we need to have an emergency guaranteed livable income so that uh people get a uh a ch- a support check. You know, you can, if you if you don't need it, you can turn around and repay it. And it would be uh income based and taxed back based on on uh on need. Um but a lot of people have gotten on board with this, a lot of different MPs. And we have a poverty, an anti-poverty caucus. And this morning, we had a meeting at seven AM uh. You know, telling the the uh the caucus chair that uh I've heard him complain because he's got young kids. Complaining about meetings in the evening that are too late for him. And I s- I s- I said, wow, you know, it's seven in the morning here on the wet coast. Um but this morning, we had the minister, Minister Hussein came in and talked about guaranteed livable income and. He's he's uh warmed to the idea, he's warming up to it. But you know, it's the uh, as he said, it's the plumbing. Like, how do you figure out how we don't send a check to billion, to the millionaires and the billionaires? And that's easy. That's a, you know. That's an easy one to figure out. And I was explaining it to him and I sent him an email again uh this evening, explaining that. When you get a job, you've, and every year, you fill out a a form as an employee. And it outlines what benefits you're eligible for uh come tax time. And your paycheck is based on uh those deductions and and the tax bracket you've been in. So the accountant can just look at what what brackets you're you're in like. Uh and determine how much tax gets withdrawn from your check. And with a guaranteed livable income or universal basic income, it would be a similar kind of thing. You would just have as part of that form. Once you reach a certain income threshold, it would be check, check that box, you're not eligible. Uh and you wouldn't get a check. And that's a system that would allow. Um, you know, the, you have a system where there's a gradual and graduated clawback. You know, that that incentivizes people to work. So, you know, you get your U B I or your G L I. And then you earn a hundred dollars, that first hundred dollars, your clawback might be only five dollars or eight dollars. And. But when you start to get into the, you know, the high forty thousand dollars or the low fifty thousand dollars. You might only get a few dollars of guaranteed livable income a month. You know, that small percentage and then at one point it just disappears and then it's a check on the box and you don't get, you don't get it anymore. And unless you lose your job and then and then suddenly you're eligible. For people who get paid by dividends, it would be a line item on on a tax return. And then, of course, we need to rework our tax code to ensure that the wealthy. Pay their fair share of taxes because that's also a problem is we have so many loopholes that that. Uh and write-offs that that people who are fabulously wealthy can make it look like they're earning next to nothing. Because they have write-offs that actually had their life, you know, uh all your entertainment expenses, going out for dinner, et cetera. Uh all your, you know, your your different expenses that you can use to write down and there're loopholes to offshore wealth and. Um et cetera, et cetera. We need to close those things down and then make sure that. People can't abuse the system if you have a universal basic income or guaranteed livable income. The minister was very interested and there were some MPs from P E I and P E I has just sent a letter to the government. Because they want to do uh a pilot program there. The government of P E I said they wanna do that there. Uh the province of British Columbia is uh moving that way. There's there's um. We're uh that we're in the process of examining that in this province and uh what we brought up with the minister is that. If there is a pilot program, then it needs to be a pilot program. You know, the federal government's putting money into it, then if the government changes in P E I or B C, they can't just. You know, cut the program like the Ford government did in Ontario and end it before it's it's finalized. You need to have a a firm agreement. And then also part of that agreement should be that if it's successful and the data shows that it works. And it's affordable for the government, then then that pilot should become a permanent uh process. A permanent um program.
All right. Well, uh thanks, thanks for that, Paul. It is good to know. Also, I heard that um the uh. Yeah, uh of course, uh U B I and a guaranteed livable income would reduce homelessness. And so that also relates to the uh to the issue that we were speaking before that. And um I've also heard that the um that the Liberal Caucus and the Liberal Pa- Party have put. Um guaranteed livable income, universal basic income as a priority for their upcoming um uh policy convention.
Yeah. So things are happening, people are interested in it. And just just a side note, so guaranteed livable income would not eliminate programs like affordable housing. Uh or, you know, other programs that support uh low-income people.
Yeah. Okay, the next uh issue that we wanted to discuss is um the Anchorage's issue, the Anchorage is in the Southern Gulf Islands. And we did get a question in advance from George. Uh George is uh speaking on behalf of the hereditary people from Staminus First Nations. He says that the freighter issue is huge there. Much destruction, pollution, effects on all marine life and on the ocean floor. Our food, land, air, water, we need our two hundred mile boundary policed. So I wonder if you wanna discuss a little bit Anchorage's and and what you've been doing on that issue as well lately.
So I've been really active on this issue and I know in Staminus, they're fed up, li- like a lot of other communities uh. Um with these huge freighters parked just offshore and and in Staminus, just off Kalit Bay, which is a beautiful, beautiful bay. Uh there's these freighters parked and the lights are on all night and the engines, the auxiliary engines are running uh twenty-four, seven. And they're dragging their chains. Uh we had a collision of two freighters back uh at the end of March. And uh one of them was punctured and, you know, thankfully, it didn't leak fuel or it wasn't a larger disaster. But the the one freighter dragged its train chain, banged into the other freighter and they got their their anchor chains tangled up. It was a serious mess and and uh we uh requested a Transport Canada. Uh investigation into that. And so that that is going is going forward. Uh Island Trusts did as well. Uh along with um uh other other uh people and organizations. The freighter issue, um. It's it's complex. Uh George has mentioned the two hundred mile. It's it's complex, George has mentioned the two hundred mile boundary limit. So we have two two limits, the two hundred mile limit is is a. Industrial limit, so that is where we can have our fisheries. Oil, you know, oil and gas, wells, research, minerals, whatever, like that's that is. For resources, our twelve mile limit is for shipping. So we can stop ships coming into the twelve mile limit. Once they're in the twelve mile limit, we've allowed them into our waters. We need to provide anchorage for them if they're if they need anchorage. And if they're coming to our port and they arrive early, then we have to provide anchorage for them, which is. Why all these ships are, there's thirty three anchorage, all these ships coming in. This has been dealt with in other places. With with vessel arrival system, so in Australia, in the port of Newcastle. Is a coal port, they they would have up to seventy ships anchored at a time waiting to go into the coal port. And until one time, one of those ships washed up on a dragged anchor and ended up on a popular beach. And we had a ship drag anchor down near Ladysmith and Saltair that could have ended up on the beach here. Just, you know, about a month ago. So this ship washed up on the beach and the people said, that's enough, we've had enough of this. And the government implemented a vessel arrival system or they mandated it through the port of Newcastle. And so what that system does is vessels need to to. Contact the port when they're fifteen days out. From their normal, like the the scheduled time and then the port tells them, like. It's good, you can come in and and get your load, everything's working well at the port or. No, you need to slow down and then they will, they would mandate that the ships slow down. So that they arrive when the port is ready to load them. Now, when a ship slows down, it actually reduces greenhouse gases, it reduces the amount of bunker fuel that's burned. So it's actually environmentally friendly and it's it's more environmentally friendly than having the the ship. At anchor, they don't burn bunker fuel when they're in port because they're not allowed to. In 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 most cases, maybe in some low income countries where there's less environmental standards. But definitely in Canada, they can't be, so they're burning diesel here, but even still, it's polluting the air here. And it's wasting energy and producing more greenhouse gases, so the the ships slow down, they arrive just on time. And sixty percent of the ships now that arrive at Newcastle don't anchor at all. The other thirty three percent or thirty six percent are only anchored there on average for three days. So we have ships here that are anchored. For weeks, a month, sometimes two months. And in the Naimo, so there's a difference between the anchorage is here and the Naimo, there's eight or nine anchorage is here and then I will. Those anchorage is the ships have to pay for, there's a fourteen day limit and they could stay longer than the fourteen days, but the. They have to pay to be here. The other anchorage is in the Southern Gulf Islands, they don't pay. And there's the 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 time limits, there's a time limit for how long they could be there, but then they just move to another spot. So Alistair McGregor, who is the MP for. Couch in Malahat Langford, just south of here, he put a private members bill. And I was a joint second on it and he basically just said, we're gonna outlaw all these anchor anchorage in this area. The problem is that that's not a solution. It got a lot of press and publicity, which is good because we wanna we want to to apply pressure, we want the public to be talking about this more. But it just means that those ships would have to go somewhere else, so they would maybe be on the east side of. Gabriel Island, they might be up by Tex-8 Island, they might be off the coast of the Sunshine Coast. And so it ends up being in somebody else's backyard rather than ours, so not necessarily a solution. We put for put out an op ed, Elizabeth May and I in the I want to use Bulletin and the Driftwood. Where we talked about a bunch of the different solutions. One of those solutions is for grain ships, because there's there's really two types of ships that are anchored out here. Fifty five percent of them are coal freighters. Almost all the rest of them are grain and then some of them might be for potassium or or sulfur or some of the other bulk commodities. These aren't container ships, so you see this on social media, people saying, you know, you want your consumer goods. You should stop complaining about the anchorage, it has nothing to do with the consumer goods that show up in our stores. The container port ports, there's a few of them, the container terminals over in Vancouver. Are on a just in time delivery system, those ships, you don't see them hanging around on anchor, they come into port. They load, they unload and they load and they leave. And they have mandated that system and it operates on based on a computer system that that runs it. Like a fine oiled machine. The grain issue, part of the grain issue is that. We don't have the. Facilities here that allow for grain to be loaded into the holds of ships while it's raining or snowing. And but there are systems available to do that, there are these big hoods that they put over top. So you can load grain in any weather and that needs to be mandated at the port. The grain terminals have to be told, you must put this equipment in place. The other part of the green issue is that after the privatization. Of the Canada Wheat Board by this, the Harper Government, that was all pulled apart, part of its own by a Saudi Arabian company. Part of its own by different corporations and the the single desk that they used to have for grain delivery is gone. And so there's there's less coordination in the system. This is also what they did in Australia was they mandated the system. So that the the exporters and the shippers had to work together to ensure that they were. That they were running like clockwork. And that that needs to happen here and part of the issue with grain, of course, is the railways. Are clogged up with oil cars more and more, so there's, you know, the grains not getting shipped the the way that it used to. It's not coordinated the way that it was when we had the Canada Wheat Board, so there's that issue. Then there's the coal ships and we get a lot of coal shipped through Canada from the United States. It crosses the border into Canada and then just goes on to ships, there's no sale here in Canada, so there's no tariffs, there's no. Carbon tax, there's no taxes, there's nothing that goes to Canadians to the government. And the reason why is because the West Coast states have all banned the export of thermal coal or coal from their ports. So Washington, Oregon and California will not have coal ports in those states. And there's no coal that's exported from the West Coast of the United States. So all of the trains filled with coal from Wyoming and Montana come to British Columbia. They cross the border and they go straight to the, you know, thirty kilometers into the country and they're at the port. And so I put forward a private members bill that bans the export of thermal coal. I couldn't target just US thermal coal. Because that would be an unfair trade practice under the World Trade Organization and under the Kuzma Agreement. The Canada-US Mexico Trade Agreement or the New NAFTA, whatever you wanna call it. So I I thought, let's just ban the export of of thermal coal. Now, we export metallurgical coal here, but metallurgical coal, that's used for the steelmaking process. Thermal coal is used for electrical generation, so they're burning coal to create electricity. It's the dirtiest way to create electricity, it creates a lot of greenhouse gases. We're shutting down coal fire generation in Canada, so Ontario has shut down its coal fire generation. Alberta and Saskatchewan need to do the same thing. Need to stop burning dirty coal to create electricity and we, what we need is a electricity grid. That ties the provinces together so that we can have renewable power like wind and solar. In Alberta and Saskatchewan, which can produce a lot of wind and solar during the daytime or when the wind is blowing. And then hook it up to our hydroelectric dams in British Columbia and Manitoba. So that when the wind isn't blowing and the sun isn't shining, they can draw from our hydropower. And then also there there, there's a lot of geothermal potential all over this country and all of the abandoned oil wells. About ten percent of the abandoned oil wells and there's thousands of them. They have they have potential for creating geothermal electricity. And there has been, there have been wells drilled and there's geothermal. Being developed in Saskatchewan and other places. So I put forward a private members bill to ban the export of thermal coal, I was tabled a couple of weeks ago. One of the other things about the green issue is it actually costs grain farmers. To the tune of of about twenty four million dollars a year. That's that's passed on to the farmers by that inefficiency because we're paying. They're they're paying for these ships to sit around and anchor, so I've I've. Contacted some conservative MPs and critics, the agriculture critic, trade critic. Transport critic and let them know, like, there's money to be saved here for farmers and there's a lot of conservatives under Perry's. And so I'm looking for common cause on that issue with them. To to resolve this problem, so that that we can just have ships come here, load up and leave. And there's no reason why we can't have a system like what's what's been established in Australia. Or at Europe's largest port in Rotterdam, where they have what's called a just in time delivery system, same deal. The ships are told to slow down, this is your time to show up at port. You know, you'd have a scheduled time, but but maybe now it's gonna be a little bit later, so slow down and arrive at this time instead. And they got it running like a well tuned machine, computers, who knew, eh?
All right, so we still have lots of lots of stuff to get through and a few questions that have popped up. In 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 the YouTube channel, so.
So what are you saying, you want me to talk less and?
Yeah, we have thirty five, we have thirty five minutes to go, so we'll speed things up a little bit, even though we do have some major issues coming up. So the next issue, you just had last weekend, an op ed in the Victoria Times columnist to go out. About the E and N Land Grant and the opportunity to right a historic wrong. And I know that this is an issue that you could have an entire seminar about. But if you could just talk a little bit about that issue and the idea of indigenous protected conservation areas.
Okay, you want me to keep it short? So, okay, to start with, the E and N Land Grant was part of, it was a it was a deal with BC Joint Confederation. And BC Joint Confederation, a hundred and fifty years ago in twenty twenty one. So eighteen seventy one, BC Joint Confederation, part of the deal was to connect all of the nation's capitals by rail. So in eighteen seventy four, Robert Dunsmere, who used to own the town of Wellington, Extension and Ladysmith. Oh, the coal baron and he was a government minister at the time, was given eight thousand square kilometers. Twenty percent of Vancouver Island, eight thousand square kilometers, twenty percent of Vancouver Island. So basically, everything you see, when you look out your window and see all these mountains, none of that is crown land. It was all given away in eighteen seventy one, despite treaties that were were signed with the name. In eighteen fifty four, despite the fact that there weren't treaties signed with many of these other First Nations. It was all given away out from under the indigenous people of this island. And he was also given seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So all of our watersheds, community drinking watersheds from Campbell River all the way south to Jordan River. Including all the way west to Port Alberti, that's how far west this goes. All of our community drinking watersheds are in private land. So one of the things that I've been discussing with. In Ottawa with Eli Ans, who's got the Icicle Olem Foundation. Is indigenous protected conservation areas and this is, there's a number of them, the first one was Mears Island. New Channel Territory, Hope and Tofino, and it is, it's tribal park. It there, it's under the control and authority of the First Nations. Whose territory it's in. And it doesn't mean that there's not economic activity, it means that they're the ones in charge of that economic activity. And part of what they're doing is to ensure that it's sustainable, that it's that is. That they're looking at land in a way that that makes sure that it's. Sustained for the the generations yet to come. So things like sustainable logging, selective logging is not off the table. You can have recreation, tourism, other activities, industrial activities or or development. As long as it fits into a plan that recognizes that you need to to maintain biodiversity. And you you need to continue to to have some integrity, to keep the integrity of the land. And so I've talked to the the First Nations in my writing. So now it's to me this, it's the name of Laxan about this. And they like the idea, there's indigenous protected conservation areas. The Talten have have them, they're in the Selkton, they've developed them and they they. There's, they're developing in different places. Here it's unusual because in those places it's crown land that they're that they're that they're taking over, control and authority of. Determining how those lands will best be used and ensuring that they're that. The biodiversity of those places stays intact. Or is less threatened. Here is different because it's all this privatized land, so it's a process that's First Nations led. So it's not something that I can do, but I'm making them aware of this whole process and I think that. You know, coming up. To a hundred and fifty years of. BC Joining Confederation, we need we need reparation, we need reconciliation and we need conservation in these areas. And the Naimo River watershed is a is an example of the need for conservation, it's. Seven hundred and fifty square kilometers, the river is fifty six kilometers long. In that seven hundred and fifty square kilometers, there is point six square kilometers of parkland. Some RDN parks along the Naimo River and there's a ten point six square kilometers of conservation area. Which is down at the Naimo River Estuary and the top of Green Mountain and I think Mount Lake for the Vancouver Island Marments. So just over one and a half percent of the whole Naimo River watershed is protected. And, you know, it's a well-loved recreation area along the river. There's a lot of potential for First Nations to work to to work together. With a indigenous protected conservation area and so it's something I'm I'm making them aware of. And a process that I think would be a great one to see unfold as we as we celebrate. Hundred and fifty years of Confederation.
Thanks, Paul, and the next issue we're gonna jump into is the long term care homes. Obviously, COVID, it was tore through the long term care homes in Canada. And exposed a lot of problems with these issues, so what are some of the problems and what can we look to for solutions?
Well, we had a problem here in the Naimo before COVID and I was on on that issue and that was with. With the Naimo Seniors Village, where the the care for seniors was substandard. There was a lack of of workers there and the problem there, the Naimo Seniors Village. Was sold many times as part of a company called Retirement Concepts, which has about thirty different retirement. Homes in in BC and Alberta. Every time that the Naimo Seniors Village sold, the employees would get laid off. And then rehired at lower wages, working part time with no benefits. And so by the time this year rolled along, the people that worked at the Naimo Seniors Village. Were making twenty five percent less than the the going rate for the same job in other not for profit homes. Or government run homes and then the Naimo Seniors Village was the Retirement Concepts was bought by. On Bang Insurance, a Chinese insurance company which was caught up in a in a scandal, a corruption scandal. And then taken over by the Chinese state, so there's a problem here, there's a disconnect. Our seniors need to be taken care of, they deserve all, you know, all of the the rights and dignity and care. In their senior years that they deserve. They've worked in, you know, they've, they've contributed. Their whole lives and they need dignity in their retirement and they need proper care. This is a story that's replaced, that's, you know, that has happened all across Canada. Luckily for the Naimo Seniors Village, it was taken over by Vancouver Island Health Authority before COVID. But in private-owned homes across country and Ontario and Quebec especially. That's where COVID spread through and we had workers who weren't being respected, had to have multiple part-time jobs and multiple. Multiple, uh, long-term care homes to, to get by. And that's just ridiculous. Why you've, you've got the same job in three different places. And so when COVID hit, they would, they were actually trans- transmitting it to different long-term care homes and. And thousands of people died because of it. And the army had to go into long-term care homes in, in Quebec. In Ontario and the conditions were horrific. And it's because they, they had cut inspections and they'd cut corners and. The companies that owned them were paying their shareholders and their C E, CEOs hands, handsomely. And you know, the, the dollar for dollar, the, the government funds these homes. So in British Columbia, a for-profit home and a not-for-profit home and a government home would get the same amount of money per senior. But the, the way the money was spent was completely different. So we need a national. Program, a national set of standards for care and a national set of standards for the workers who are caring for our seniors. For our loved ones. And that's, you know, we, we also want to see private ownership banned. I think that it's just the idea that we're going to make money off of warehousing seniors, that, that concept is gone. It's history. It needs to go. And so the, the COVID has ripped this wide open. And we're, we've been calling for, for a national senior strategy and a, and a way to deal with. A national standard for care homes. So that's where we're at on that one. I've been talking a lot about, about. About long-term care homes and seniors for, since I was elected too, so.
Yeah. All right. Well, the next issue that I'm, I want to talk about is Canot Labs. So this is also an issue that you've spoken about quite a bit in, in Parliament and. Relating to, relating to that is. There's a question from Bill from Lady Smith asked a question. So it's not just about that. I'll, I'll ask a question and then you can talk about both these issues. Which is that the pandemic has ex- exposed vulnerabilities in Canada in regards to supply chains and our lack of domestic production in many areas. Including personal protective equipment. We can't trust the U S or China to have our best interests at heart. Especially during times of crisis like the pandemic. So will you work towards the re-industrialization of Canada? So it's not exactly the same issue, but it is related and I'll let you take that away.
Yeah, it's definitely related. So I'll start off with the labs. And we used to have in this country Canot Labs. It was established in. Nineteen fourteen and when they, the person who discovered diphtheria vaccine. Worked with the University of Toronto to set up a lab there. And the mandate of the lab was that it was. To produce any profits were recycled. It was a nonprofit lab. All, all profits went into, into. Healthcare and the, the laboratory to make sure that it worked for the public good. And Canot Labs was around for seventy years. It was. There was a problem in Canada before that. We were reliant on U S drug companies and laboratories. Surprise, surprise, we seem to be right back where we started. So then this became a model and. When. Insulin was, was discovered. They produced insulin. They produced vaccines, vaccines for a wide range. Of different things, smallpox. They, they mass-produced vaccines and they, they gave the. Intellectual property to other countries to produce vaccines in other places and they produce vaccines for, for other countries. And so Canada was a leader in this public health model and. Providing a nonprofit model to, to ensure the health and safety of, of citizens and to. To wipe out diseases that were. Were killing people and maiming people. Canot Labs was. Parceled out to a, a Canada corporation, like a, a Crown Corporation. It was set up to make profit. And that's when everything started to go downhill. That was done by the Liberal Government in the seventies. And then in nineteen eighty four, it was finally privatized by the Conservative Brian Mulroney Government. And we now have private corporations that use laboratories and universities. That are publicly funded, but the intellectual property is owned by those corporations. And so. You know, this is just another thing that's become really apparent when we need a vaccine. The labs in Quebec. Have been closed down. Our, our capacity for making vaccines has, you know, it's still there, but it's diminished. And the ability to do this. In the public interest, when we need these kind of things in the public interest is, is gone. So I've been advocating for a return to that. In terms of P P E and other things like we need to. Rebuild our value chain in Canada. And one of the things that happened when. Donald Trump was threatening to not ship P P E to Canada, is I left the deputy prime minister know, and the prime minister, but I. In particular, Minister Freeland, because she was responsible for negotiations with the United States and had a relationship there. I let her know that right here in, in the Naimo, the Harmak pulp mill produced a type of pulp. That was then shipped to the United States for creating P P E. And so I let her know that and she used that information to contact the, the State Department and. The Trade Department down there to let, you know, Donald Trump know, like if you want to cut off. Export of P P E from the United States to Canada, you might want to look at the supply chain and where the raw materials are coming for that. Before you do that. But we need to be manufacturing more here and this is, it's just become all the more apparent with COVID. We have a, a problem with, you know, in, in the, the question Bill also mentions that. We have built-in obsolescence and we're buying cheaper products that last. As long as the warranty and that's it. You got a one-year warranty on a, on a dishwasher or. You know, a laundry, laundry clothes washer or whatever and, and these. Products are dying, electronics are dying just after the warranty expires. It's built-in obsolescence, there's, we need right-to-repair legislation. We need a circular economy where, where manufacturers are held responsible for the full life cycle of their product. And when we do that, we'll see products improve because they don't want to have to deal with pulling these things apart and. You know, recycling the material in them when, when all it would take is a, a few minor tweaks to make them last long.
You'd write to repair legislation.
Yeah, right to repair legislation and. Manufacturer responsibility, like life, life cycle. Legislation. So those are, those are the things we need to do. And rebuild our manufacturing base.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do some, we're gonna have to do some rapid-fire stuff here because we are gonna run out of time. And I'm gonna jump just straight to some questions without, and, and you can respond. So. First of all, Rick in the, in the YouTube comments. Asked the question after the seniors homes, but it relates also to re-industrialization and trade. Based on your comments on ownership of seniors homes, what are your views on Chinese or other foreign ownership? Of Canadian mines, oil fields, senior homes, et cetera?
Well, I think like with strategic resources, we need to. Keep it in Canadian hands as much as possible. We've signed this Canada-China F I P A agreement. The Harper Government got us into the. Canada-China F I P A agreement. It's a thirty-one-year agreement that states that if we discriminate against. We have to give Chinese corporations, including state-owned corporations, national treatment and give them most favored nation stat, status. And the, the, their investments here are protected for thirty-one years. All the other F I P As we have, have get-out clauses where the agreement can be terminated with a one-year notice. Here we're stuck with it until twenty twenty-seven, fifteen years after it was signed by the Harper Government in cabinet without debate in Parliament. That'll be the first fifteen years, then we can give notice. And then any company that's invested like Sinopac or Petro. China that have invested in the fracking fields in the northeast of B C or the oil sands in Alberta. And they, they'll be able to keep their investments. And if we stop them from. You know, having projects that get, get their. Investments out of this country, like pipelines, then we'll have to pay them for the loss of potential profit for those. For those. Laws and policies that we put in place. They, they get in the way of, you know, it gets in the way of us being able to deal with climate change. Effectively. So I do think that strategic resources, we, we do need to, to have more protection on. We do see China. Buying up all kinds of assets all around the world, the same way the United States has done. And I think if we control our resources. More will actually be in a, a much better position. I mean, that's what Norway did. They set a fee that was much higher. They own their resources. They had a national oil company that worked in partnership with multinationals and they got a huge royalty rate on the oil. In Canada, they said, oh, we can't do that. We can't charge too much. And in Norway, they took the Viking attitude and said, if you want it, you gotta pay for it. And they're sitting on a trillion dollars in their heritage fund in Alberta. I don't know what they have in their heritage fund anymore. If they even have anything in their heritage fund.
All right, we had a bunch planned to, to discuss in relation to foreign policy and foreign trade. You've touched about a little bit of it, but Lars sent an email in. He kind of wrote a lot about it. He, he wrote a kind of an essay about, about Canadian foreign policy and being subservient to the U S foreign policy. So what do you have to say? He, he mentioned what happened in Bolivia with, with the deposition of Aviva Morales. But what are your thoughts about Canadian foreign policy being subservient to U S foreign policy?
Well, I think we're, that we're much better off as a country to have an independent foreign policy. And we're, we're a middle nation. We're not a superpower, but we're, you know, we could have a lot more diplomatic power. As, as a medium power like other countries do, if we, we used our, if we had a foreign policy that wasn't so directly tied. To the United States because it, we lose respect in other. Parts of the world because we're, we're seen as, as just kind of like a vassal state of. Of the United States. Our, our military is very tied to the, to the United States. We get involved in NATO missions of regime change, you know, Libya, Libya was a disaster bombing. Libya was a huge, huge mistake. And I think we're better off as a diplomatic power. And, and using our diplomatic skills. Around the world to try to make the world a better place and, and to, to move away from war and regime change. And what happened in Bolivia, you know, was, was seriously problematic. There's no way the government in Canada should have sided with. With the coup government there. And we've seen democracy has spoken and yeah, Aviva Morales's. Party has won a vast majority and that's as it should be. They represent the indigenous people. Of Bolivia and they are the majority.
Okay, next, I was gonna ask you about the five-year anniversary of the Paris Agreement. And i- in, in short, because as I said, we have a bunch of questions to get to and there's a related question from Rick. What are your thoughts on the new carbon tax coming at a time when people are suffering financially? Of course, the carbon taxes is, it, it's gonna take a while and it's, it's a long-term implementation, but. If you want to take that and speak briefly about the five-year anniversary of the Paris Agreement and Bill C twelve related.
So one of the things that I, I actually, the, the way the carbon tax is working now is you're actually. You won't see this in British Columbia where we've had a carbon tax for a long time. But the, the way that they're implementing the tar- carbon tax, the, the federal government is implementing the carbon tax in other provinces. That don't have a carbon tax like British Columbia. They're actually writing a dividend check to people and they're gonna send that check out on a quarterly basis. So people will see how much money they're getting back on the carbon tax. I know that there are some issues around the carbon tax with, with farmers. And depending on the kind of farming, like animal agriculture, can put out a lot of greenhouse gases. The, the fifth anniversary of the Paris Accord, we are failing. Like thi- this country has failed. We have, we didn't establish a new target at Paris. We don't have a Paris target. We have the, the. Target that was established by the Harper Government before the Paris Accord and it is too low. It's, it's about fifteen percent. Too low. Where that target is reduce emissions thirty percent. Over two thousand and five by, by twenty thirty. We should be at forty-five percent. Really, that's the Paris. Target, but in twenty eighteen, the I P C C said we actually need to increase that target. So it should be at about sixty percent. We have, we have agreed nine times to international agreements. And nine times we have not had any plans and nine times we have failed to meet our international agreements. And we just had, twenty twenty was our date to meet the Copenhagen target, which was established in two thousand and nine. By the Harper Government. Eight provinces and all the territories met that target. So the eight provinces and the territories that represent eighty-five percent of the population met that target. They reduced emissions by seventeen percent. Two provinces increased their emissions by as much as all the rest of Canada decreased their emissions. So our emissions are, are the same. We, we totally missed the target. In Britain, they established a carbon budget law and all governments are bound by it. And they've been meeting all of their targets. They used to have far higher greenhouse gas emissions than Canada. And now they're much lower than Canada. So C twelve doesn't deal with these issues properly. It's more smoke and mirrors and it's accountability, not for this government, not for the government after it. But for, you know, government, then, you know, there, then there's not a five-year target for twenty twenty-five. The next target's twenty thirty. Like, you know, it's gonna be a completely different government by then, a different generation of politicians.
All right, so a few questions left. Neil sent a question in advance about the Bill C six, the, the bill to ban conversion therapy. He is concerned that, that bill will take away the right of parental instruction of their children concerning sexual and religious guidance. And he's concerned about the separation of church and state, that this is the state interfering in family and churches.
So I've heard this, this, this concern a lot. And what I, I want to do is just read you what the, what the bill says. So the definition of conversion therapy. It says conversion therapy means a practice, treatment or service. Designed to change a person's sexual orientation to heterosexual, to change a person's gender identity. Or gender expression to cisgender or to repress or reduce non-heterosexual attraction or sexual behavior. Or cis, non-cisgender. Gender expression. For greater certainty, this definition does not include a practice, treatment or service. That relates to the exploration and development of an integrated personal identity. Without favoring any particular sexual orientation, gender identity or gender expression. So. Parenting is parenting. Teaching is teaching. Parenting is not a practice. It is not a treatment and it is not a service. Parenting is not therapy. Parenting is parenting. Teaching is teaching. And as a, as a minister or preacher, that is also a different definition. As a, as a preacher, you're not a therapist. So. Those, those things aren't covered under the law. It doesn't affect. Those, those things aren't covered under the law. It doesn't affect parenting or at all. It doesn't affect school counseling at all. The definition of counseling. Uh, is the job or process of listening to somebody and giving that person advice about their problems. So. Listening and giving advice. When you go back to the conversion therapy. It says it's a practice, treatment or service designed to change somebody. So when you go to a counselor, they're not there to change you. They're there to listen to you, to try to give you advice and try, try to help you along. And, and you know. Um, when, when young people, when teenagers are exploring their sexuality and trying to figure out their attractions. They can sit down with a counselor and have a conversation about that. That's not gen, that's not conversion therapy at all. That's a conversation with a counselor who's not trying to change you, but is there to listen to you and maybe give you some advice. On your feelings and how, you know, what, you know, providing counseling. And ministers, ministers uh, provide counseling as well. This is something that, that is part of that religious practice, as ministers do that. Conversion therapy has involved all kinds of demeaning processes and some kind, and some cases like shock therapy. Or people having to smell like really offensive things like excrement or rotting meat when they're watching sexual images. I don't know if you've seen the movie A Clockwork Orange, but that's, that's what conversion therapy is. It's like. Pinning your eyes open and making you watch um, violent imagery over and over and over again so that you have an aversion to violent imagery. Um, and it doesn't work. It's the, the Canadian Psychological Association and the Canadian Pediatric Medicine. Uh, society, they both oppose conversion therapy because it's not. It's not a therapy, it's pseudoscience and, and it doesn't affect parenting, it doesn't affect your ability to parent. Your ability to teach, your ability to counsel. And to talk to, to young people um, about their sexuality, about their feelings and, or anything else.
All right, so we just have two more and, and only five minutes to go. So. Quick question from, from Dave about government transparency. Will you be discussing efforts you are taking to promote openness from this very secretive Liberal, Liberal Party of Canada? For example, the We scandal, the pandemic misspend, will we be hearing about your efforts to get to the bottom of this?
So, you know, we've asked questions about this. Right now, the Ethics Commissioner is digging into this. And the Ethics Commissioner is uh, independent of Parliament. They have uh, authority to be looking into things and when they find things that are, that are highly questionable that, that. Go into the legal boundaries, they involve the R C M P. When, you know, we had, we had this debate, um, a conservative motion to set up a, a. Committee on Corruption and Scandal. And that whole, that would have just been a politicized uh, committee. Um. That would have been highly problematic and the, the Liberals ended up making it a confidence vote and it got voted down. But you know, we can politicize uh, scandals. Or we can highlight them and, and bring them, bring them to the attention of uh, the independent um, Ethics Commissioner. Uh, the R C M P, where they need to be looking at these things. Uh, so the We scandal, they're digging into that. Um. There has been pandemic misspending and those things are being looked into. And it just depends on what you're talking about with, with misspending. I mean, this whole thing with the Serb, there's a lot of people that, that. Got the Serb who weren't eligible according to the rules that changed after they originally applied. And so. Um, there's different things that we do always need to be paying attention to and looking to and ensuring that we. Hold the government to account and hold them to the highest ethical standards and make sure that our tax dollars are spent wisely. And properly and um. You know. We, we, we've had scandals in governments, conservative and liberal, conservative and liberal, going back uh, generations and generations. And I was talking about one of those scandals earlier on with uh. Robert Dunsmere who got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and eight thousand square kilometers of British Columbia. To build a railway from the Nymo to Lady Smith, you know, twenty percent of Vancouver Island. That's a huge chunk of real estate for a little railway. That's corruption. And we've been dealing with it, we've been dealing with it forever.
All right, so we have, we have, we have two minutes to go and a really big question, so I don't know if we should keep this for the next time. I'll just throw it out there if you want to say something for, for, for two minutes on it and then we'll wrap up. But it's a, it's a question from Carl. Uh, how about the failed efforts of dealing with the drug problem in downtown Nymo and the loss of the city core to the general public?
That's a hugely complex issue. You know, drug addiction is a, it's a social issue. It's a health issue. Um, people get addicted to drugs for a wide variety of reasons and. The criminality of drugs act, actually just exacerbates the situation because it's. You know, these drugs aren't regulated by the government, they're regulated by organized crime. And that's who's selling them and that's who is peddling them. Um. Distributing them. And people, people get addicted to drugs for such a wide variety of reasons. Some people have accidents and. And things that happen in their lives and they're prescribed oxycodone or Percocet or other opioids. And then they become addicted to them and then when the doctor cuts them off of that, they end up going to, to street drugs. And a lot of people who are dying of, of drug poisoning is are actually dying in their own homes and they're not people you think about. Uh, in terms of the, of the downtown core, they're like ordinary working folk, you know, construction workers and teachers and. And others who have, who have become addicted to opioids. Um, because they started off with prescribed painkillers. Um, the situation in our downtown is complex and it's complex everywhere. We shut down. Uh, institutions in the eighties after the, the um, Constitution and the Charter of Rights because you couldn't. Uh, institutionalize people against their will. They had to either be a harm to themselves or to somebody else. And so we, we have people um, who need help and need services and we need to provide services. To, to people with mental health issues and we need to look at all of the different complex reasons, reasons why. People are homeless, uh, why they're addicted to drugs. Um, we could do a whole town hall.
Yeah, I think in the next, next town hall that we do, we'll open with that question so it can get a proper response. Cause it is, it is a huge question and, and there's a lot to, to discuss there. So um, it's time to close. Uh, I would like to thank everybody who submitted questions in advance and everybody. Who um, uh, discussed issues in the chat. Uh, I really appreciate, I, I was following the chat. I really appreciated what an interesting and engaged conversation was happening there. Very, very respectful. So thank you everybody for that. Thank you very much to Lori for moderating. Um, and uh, you can go to PaulManleyMP.ca, sign up to get updates on events that Paul does. You can also like Paul Manley on Facebook and, and see events there. And I'd like to thank you Paul for, for, I, I appreciate working for you and I appreciate the work that you do. And for being so knowledgeable. I learn a lot every time I um, I do an event like this with you.
Well, thank you, thank you so much, Alain, and thank you Lori for helping out. And thank you to everybody that tuned in and I want to remind you that if you, if you have issues, things that you're concerned about. That you're welcome to reach out to this office. Need help with anything related to the federal government, whether it's C R A or immigration. Uh. E I, all kinds of different issues. You're welcome to, to reach out. My staff are here to help you in a compassionate. Nonpartisan way. I don't care whether you voted for me or not. We're here to serve this community. And I'm here to listen to your concerns and to be your voice in the House of Commons. You may not agree with everything that I have to say or the, the, the positions that I take. But I'm actually here to represent you and I'm willing to listen to you and I, and I do. Bring different perspectives uh, to the House and I will bring concerns to ministers based on what I hear from constituents. So thank you very much for tuning in. Have a healthy and happy holiday season.
Yeah, so if you do need help from this office, you can email paul dot manley at PARL, the first four letters of Parliament. P A R L dot G C for Government of Canada dot C A. Or you can call two five zero seven three four six four zero zero. And all this information is also at PaulManleyMP.ca. Thank you so much, everybody, and have a safe and happy holiday and reach out to the people in your life. Who might be feeling isolated and um, yeah, just be safe and, and, and share. Share what we can share safely during these holidays. Take care. Bye bye.
Bye.